Please be seated, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this afternoon's meeting of council. And before we move on to the business of the meeting, I would like to call upon the leader of council to say a few words about recent incidents in Manchester. Leader of council, please.
Lord Mayor, we all woke up yesterday morning to hear the dreadful and devastating news about the bomb attack at the Manchester Arena. Throughout the day, our initial shock turned to horror as we started to see the details of the victims coming through. For many of us, it also turned to anger that innocent children and young people should be attacked in this way. And that anger also turned to determination that we would stand shoulder to shoulder with Manchester in its time of need and commit ourselves anew as a city to ensuring that such evil never takes root in our communities. Our city's response has been magnificent. Yesterday and today, we're flying the flag at half mast. We opened a book of condolence in the central library, which has already been signed by hundreds of people. I've written to the leader of Manchester City Council and the mayor of Greater Manchester offering our city's condolences. And last evening, faith leaders and community leaders came together to hold a vigil at the monument, which was attended by several hundred people from right across our city. At this awful time, our thoughts are very much with the victims, their families and their friends, especially for those from our region who are as yet unaccounted for. It's also shocking to hear that the threat levels have been raised from severe to critical and we expect to see an increased policing and security presence at key sites around the city and at major events. It's important that members of the public are alert but don't get alarmed. Terrorism will not be beaten through policing alone. It requires community vigilance, so we all have a role to play. And the police are urging anybody who sees anything that they think may be suspicious to please report it, no matter how trivial it may seem. But, Lord Mayor, as the names of the victims are slowly announced throughout the day, we can only imagine the grief that those families are going through. As a city, we weep and grieve with them. We walk with them in the long, dark hours and days ahead. And we stay strong with them and the communities of Manchester and all affected communities as we face this terrible tragedy with steely determination that it will not affect our way of life. So, Lord Mayor, it's fitting that at our council AGM today, as at many other meetings and public events and services and ceremonies right the way around the country over the last 24 hours, we pay our tribute to those innocent victims and hold them close in our hearts.
Thank you, councillor Forbes. Can we now all stand for a moment's silence? Thank you. And now, as a last item of business during my year as Lord Mayor, on behalf of council, I would like to offer a vote of thanks to Lord Beecham. I couldn't quite see where you were there, Jeremy. To Lord Beecham. And there we are, a sight to behold, in the nicest possible way. To Lord Beecham in recognition of 50 years' service as a councillor with this local authority. And this is some achievement, I think you would agree. I would now like to hand over to the leader of council and the leader of opposition to say a few words.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It's a more pleasant duty this afternoon to pay a formal tribute and offer a vote of thanks on behalf of the city council to our friend and colleague Jeremy Beecham, Lord Beecham of Benwell, for his 50 years of unbroken service as a city councillor. Jeremy was first elected on the 11th of May 1967. And trawling back through the National Film Institute archives, I came across a film that was made of Newcastle City Council in those days where there was a real sense of renewal and revitalisation of local government. And I learnt three things as a result of that documentary. Firstly, that people chain-smoked indoors in council meetings. Secondly, women always wore hats to council meetings. And thirdly, Jeremy Beecham had hair, as is demonstrated by this picture. Because there is a short clip in that film of a housing surgery in Benwell, and I only recognise Jeremy because of his voice. It's a remarkable film, and I would encourage everybody to look at it. Jeremy went on very quickly to become the leader of the council, one of the youngest leaders in the country at the time. He didn't just serve as leader of this council, however. He went on to be chair of the Association of Metropolitan Authorities in 1991. He went on to be a founder and the first chair of the Local Government Association in 1997. And of course, he was appointed to the Lords in 2010 as Lord Beecham of Benwell. And he also served as a member of Labour's National Executive Committee for quite a considerable period of time as one of the local government representatives. In fact, he also served as chair of the National Executive Committee in 2005 to 2006. I suspect, Jeremy, that meetings in your day were rather more fruitful than the ones I'm suffered to attend these days. But Jeremy has been, throughout his political career, an absolute colossus in local government. He's achieved huge things on behalf of his party, local government more generally, our city, but also his local community. And it's that energy, passion and commitment to making a difference to people less well off and less fortunate that is the driving force behind him and which keeps him going today. At the weekend, we had two celebrations of Jeremy's time as a councillor. In the evening, we had a dinner for close friends, family and former colleagues, where, Lord Mayor, I know you were delighted to present Jeremy a picture of the Theatre Royal on behalf of the council, an organisation with which Jeremy has had a long association. But in the morning, Jeremy was joined by friends and colleagues from his ward to plant a tree in the Scotswood Community Garden. And we placed a plaque on that tree, or at the foot of that tree, in commemoration of his 50 years' service. Because it was going back to Jeremy's roots that we wanted to remember. Everything came from those early days in Benwell and Jeremy's experience of the abject poverty that his constituents faced. And it was very fitting, therefore, that we were able to celebrate and commemorate in such a very pleasant way in his local community with a permanent memorial to his years' service. And of course, it's not over yet. We fully expect Jeremy to keep going for certainly a bit longer. But for today, Lord Mayor, I think it's very fitting that as a council, we pay tribute to his many years' dedication as a true civil servant of this city. I say a huge thank you. And I therefore like to formally propose a vote of thanks to our good friend and colleague Jeremy Beecham.
Thank you, councillor Forbes. Councillor Lawa?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, thank you, leader of council. This is the third event I've attended in the last week for to recognise Jeremy's 50 years in the council, but it's the first one I've been allowed to speak at. So it's quite nice to get my words out here and have a say. I suppose everybody knows that I am a member of the LGA and I've seen the legacy that was left by Jeremy. He chaired the association for a long time and he's remembered really by everyone with good fondness. He did something that was amazing with the LGA. He turned it from a secondary organisation into something that placed local government at the heart of central politics. And we still have that. And it's a role, I mean, if anyone understands the role, it's a bit like if you were herding kittens, trying to hand-feed butterflies and shaming tigers at the same time. He's definitely a man of many talents to have one of the sides of everybody's support in the LGA. And in my opinion, I have to say that I don't think there'll ever be a chair to match his legacy that he's left there of any political persuasion. And that's saying something, if you ask the Tories. But I think it's a measure of the man, it's obvious. It's all to do with how he mixes with family, friends, how people feel. And it was interesting, on Saturday night, there was a huge number of people there who were friendships from across the board who were there just to wish Jeremy well. But I think the biggest thing that shows what Jeremy really stands for is the obvious way that he has a bond with his children. They were there with their partners and they certainly enjoyed every minute, were so proud of him and he is so proud of them. And I think it was a great recognition for them all. I wholeheartedly endorse the recommendation from the leader of city council and I hope everyone else does too. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
I would very much like, I'm sorry I don't have a microphone, to present this to you, Jeremy, on behalf of the whole of the city council for your 50 years' service as councillor for this city. And you will get an opportunity to say a few words, should you wish, once you return to your seat. Thank you. I'm certainly getting my exercise today. I'll call on councillor Beecham to respond, if you would care to do so. Thanks, Beecham.
Very much, Lord Mayor. I notice that my new seat is somewhat near the aisle. I don't know whether this is a deliberate tactic on the part of the chief whip, but anyway, I'm glad to have the opportunity of thanking you and the leader of council and councillor Lawa for their very kind words. I was a little alarmed by the photographs as we came in. It seemed to me rather like the Stalin's cult of personality. I hope I can't be accused of Stalinism, whatever else I may be accused of. But I'm so pleased that this council has acted unanimously in this way. Nick mentioned two events, in fact three, because the Liberal Democrat group, or at least several of them, were kind enough to arrange a little function on Friday night, which I very much enjoyed, seeing old colleagues and current colleagues on the council. And like the Labour group, they gave me a cake. As I pointed out, I was able to take that cake away, whereas I had one slice of the cake in the Labour group because the rest of it was devoured by other colleagues. But I suppose that's a good example of socialism in practice. Anyway, I did ask somebody just to taste the cake that had been given me by the Lib Dems, just in case. But in fact, there wasn't any problem about it at all. It's been an interesting, mildly, 50 years. I do hope to continue with the support of my local branch and hopefully of the electorate next year. But I just want to reflect on the fact that we are, as a council, in going through very difficult times. But all of us, across the political divide, share a huge concern for the welfare of this city and its people, whatever political differences we have. And in that spirit, I hope that we can continue to meet the inevitable and difficult challenges that lie ahead and I hope to play my part in doing so. Thank you all very much indeed.
We will now move on to item one on today's agenda: to appoint a Lord Mayor for the municipal year 2017-18. I can now confirm that one nomination has been received for the office of Lord Mayor 2017-18. I call on councillor Franks to move that councillor Lynda Wright be elected Lord Mayor of this city for the ensuing year. Councillor Franks?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I feel genuinely honoured and delighted to have the pleasure of nominating my fellow Newburn councillor, Lynda Wright, as Lord Mayor of the city of Newcastle upon Tyne for the coming year. Lynda has been a councillor since November 1996, representing Newburn Ward, where she has lived all her life in Throckley. Lynda follows in her mother, Bell Nixon's footsteps as both councillor for Newburn and Lord Mayor. I well remember when Bell was made Lord Mayor, the person nominating her said that we would never see her husband Billy, Lynda's father, who kept out of the political limelight to tend his flowers. Lynda's husband, Colin, is not so retiring and will play an active supporting role as Lynda's consort, with Hayley, Lynda's daughter, following her auntie Catherine in the family tradition as Lady Mayor F. Lynda was brought up in a strong Labour family and community in Throckley, attending minor's picnics from being a little girl. And she was a longstanding member of Throckley Women's Section. In her younger days, she was a leader in the Ray Bow Guides. Her codename was Daffodil. And as well as politics, Lynda loves dance and ballet, reading and is an avid knitter. There will be knitting needles in the Lord Mayor's parlour. From the age of 17, Lynda worked at Bainbridge's. Some of us still call it that, although it's now officially John Lewis's. And she was an office junior and later secretary to one of the managers. After having three children, she worked at Newcastle College for 26 years. And for the last year, she's been a PA before retiring recently to become Lord Mayor, hopefully. Now, some council figures. Lynda was the 100th woman to come on the council. She will be the 20th female Lord Mayor. It is 20 years since her mother Bell's inauguration. And she has been on the council herself for 20 years. Nice round figures there. In her time, she's been chair of City Works, the Poison Chalice, looking after the bins. She was cabinet member for the environment and she's currently chair of Regulatory and Appeals Committee. Lynda's long experience, warm, friendly manner and lifelong commitment to the Newcastle community will make her a splendid ambassador for the city, I'm sure. I wholeheartedly recommend Lynda to you as Lord Mayor 2017 to 18. Thank you.
I now call on councillor Fairley, Lynda's other ward councillor, to second the nomination. Councillor Fairley?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. There's not much more that I can add to that, really, but I'll try. As I've heard, Lynda was first elected by the people of Newburn Ward to the city council in 1996 following the sad death of former MP and Lord Mayor Bob Brown. And we've already heard, in doing so, Lynda notched up a first of many of her notable achievements as she and mother Bell Nixon were the first mother and daughter to serve on council together. Since Lynda was elected 21 years ago, she has carried out numerous roles with distinction. And most recently, she is Chair of Regulatory and Appeals, where she does a good job in ensuring that the city is kept safe. Lynda is passionate about the ward that she serves. She grew up in Throckley Northside Estate and went to school locally. And as we've heard, she has always lived her life in Throckley. In fact, she likes to point out that her family have been living in the Newburn area for at least 300 years, which is a long time by anybody's reckoning. In fact, Throckley didn't really exist more than being a couple of farms and a few cottages 300 years ago. So Lynda's family have been there, you know, right from the beginning. Not quite as far back as Roman times, maybe, but certainly a long time, anyway. So it's hard to imagine that Lynda representing anywhere other than the area that she loves. And it's also fair to say, as we've heard, that her entire family is steeped in the tradition of the wider Labour movement and the Labour Party. We've already heard about Lynda's mother, Bell Nixon, who previously served as Lord Mayor and has, you know, hopefully gave some pointers to Lynda. But her grandparents were also campaigners for the Labour movement. And Lynda's been married to her husband Colin for over 40 years now and with three children, Mark, Michael and Hayley, and five grandchildren, the tradition is sure to continue. Right, now, I know Lynda has relished a year as sheriff and is very much looking forward to becoming Lord Mayor. In fact, she never stops talking about it. But I mean that in a nice way. She has a fully, full programme of events already planned out. And she's had her ribbon-cutting scissors freshly sharpened already. So without anything else, I'll say, thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to second councillor Lynda Wright for the office of Lord Mayor and hope that this will be a truly memorable year. Thank you.
I therefore declare councillor Lynda Wright to be duly elected Lord Mayor of this city for the ensuing municipal year. Thank you. We've come down now, don't we? I didn't get it. Declaration first.
I, Linda Wright, have been elected Lord Mayor for the City of Newcastle upon Tyne. Hereby declare that I take the said office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties thereof. According to the best of my judgement and ability, I undertake to be guided by the Newcastle City Council Code of Conduct in the performance of my functions in that office. I, Linda Wright, do swear by Almighty God that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, her heirs and successors according to law, so help me God. Sorry. Got me pen. Thank you, everybody. Just before we go into my speech, I too would like to add my thoughts and prayers to the people in Manchester. I was one of those that was affected yesterday insofar as I knew a member of staff at the Arena, and Andy used to work for the Arena Newcastle, and I still keep in contact with him. So I had an anxious few hours until he responded back to my email, and I did, during that email, send our thoughts and prayers to them yesterday as well. Okay, here we go. Good afternoon and thank you. I have decided to talk about my charities first. The reason being that today is a very emotional rollercoaster of a day for me, and I want to get the parts where there is a strong possibility of tears out of the way first. So bear with me. I am supporting three charities, and I should have a visual aid very soon. There we go. The first is split into two parts, the BDAFA, which is the Battin Disease Family Association, and the Nicole Rich Foundation. I have no qualms in using a visual aid, and what you see on the screen now is a poster for the Nicole Rich Foundation. Nicole showed signs from an early age of various symptoms, but these symptoms took a long time to diagnose, but after some false starts, Nicole was diagnosed with Battin's disease. And if, like me, you have never heard of the disease, it is a genetic disorder. Battin disease is an extremely rare fatal neurodegenerative condition for which there is currently no cure. Following the diagnosis of Nicole, Jessica, 14 months was tested and found to be a carrier of the defective gene. Strangely enough, their older brother is not a carrier. Nicole's family just live in Throckley at the bottom of where I live, so it's very dear and very local to us. One of my goals, as well as raising as much money as possible, is to raise awareness of this awful disease. I do not want to spend too much time talking about treatment, but suffice to say that although there is treatment at Great Ormond Street, they won't accept children into the programme until they are two. However, their parents have found a doctor in Germany who will treat Jessica also. In fact, the mum was coming today, but they're going to Germany tomorrow for Jessica to have brain surgery, not Jessica, to have brain surgery to get a shunt fitted into her brain so they can start her treatment as soon as possible. They have to make obviously regular trips to that. I do hope that at some point Gail Rich can be invited into the council, possibly the Health Scrutiny Committee, so she can talk about the disease and the challenges that her and her husband face, and the obstacles they have to jump over to try and get funding for research. There have been huge steps we have made in genetic testing. We must be able to find out why this genetic disorder occurs and how we can fix it. Thank you. My second charity is the Children's Heart Foundation based at the Fremantle. I recently went to an event where Ivan Hollinsworth spoke about the cash he has raised through his charity, Sev Forchuf. Following the life-saving heart surgery, his son Serpad performed as a new baby in 2009. Ivan has raised in the order of £435,000 over the last eight years. I have already supported some of their events, and I'm more than happy to name them as my second charity. My third charity is the Marie Curie Centre at Elsick, and we should have another visual aid. This is my mum and my sister Catherine. It's a photograph that I've never seen before, and I must thank Steve Brooks most sincerely for going into the archives and spending time trying to find one for me. Some of you will know that not long after Mam finished her year, my sister Catherine was diagnosed with ovarian cancer and sadly passed away the following November. You may wonder why then I am not supporting ovarian cancer as my charity. The reason is simple. I have donated to that charity every month since my sister died, and B, Marie Curie was their charity. So I am, in their memory, supporting this charity locally. Thank you. Before I leave the world of charities, I would like to set the council members a challenge. I know how much you will all want to support my charities, and I know not all of you have occasions to do that. So to help you out, I have placed outside the chamber a collection bucket, at least I hope we have, and will do so every council meeting. Please pop some loose change into it, don't mind if that loose change is notes, and at the end of my year, I will report to you on how much I have collected. So I'm setting the gauntlet. May I say a big thank you to my colleagues Hilary and Stephen for their kind words, and apologise in advance for when I'm unable to cover surgeries. May I also take this opportunity to the lady who's holding my hand here, and say a great big thank you to the outgoing Lord Mayor, councillor Hazel Stevenson. Hazel, it has been a pleasure and a joy to work so closely with you. You are a hard act to follow, but I promise to do my best. I saw first hand what a knowledgeable and gracious lady you are. Life will be a different type of busy for you now, as you get back to your role as ward councillor. My Lady Mayor F will be my daughter Hayley, and my sister Wendy will be my Deputy Lady Mayor F. My husband Colin, who did a sterling job during my year as Sheriff, will continue to be my consort. He's entertaining the grandson at the moment. My two sons will also be my consorts, Mark and Michael. And my eldest grandson Daniel will be coming up before he goes off to use university, fingers crossed, he's coming up to assist me as well for a couple of weeks. In case I need some extra help, and they don't know this yet, I would like my daughters-in-law Nikki and Angela, and my nieces Amy and Amanda to act as companions and helpers, especially when we are raising money at charities. My theme for the year kind of follows on from Hazel's theme for last year. Hayley and I have called it Helping Hands. During the year, we would like to recognise and celebrate the dedication and hard work by volunteers in this city. I have been blown away by the lengths and sheer dedication these volunteers go to provide services in their community. I've lost my face. And the wider community in these times of austerity. Their help is invaluable, and I do hope to have a series of events to say thank you to them during my year and celebrate their achievements. To this end, I will be contacting ward councillors to help in this, as you and you alone know the helping hands in your wards, and how I would be delighted to visit any projects they lead when I can. Before I finish, I would just like to say that this is a journey for me that probably was inevitable, and I do, please excuse me, because my ward colleague said all of this, but I'm still going to say it, or I'll lose my place. As I joined council 20 years ago, when Mam was the first Sheriff for about 30 years, after stating on many occasions I'm not mad enough to be a councillor, I'm pleased to say I was so very wrong. I was the 100th female councillor, Mam and I were first mother and daughter on the council. At the same time, we are now the first mother and daughter to be Lord Mayors. I am the 20th female Lord Mayor, and when I worked it out, that's a very small percentage over the last 800 years. Ladies, we need to increase that percentage. I have been on council 20 years, and it's 20 years since Mam did this role. I am nervous. As I said before, it's a hard act to follow councillor Stevenson, but I also have a hard act to follow in my mum. She loved the role and this city, and I can say like her before me, I am honoured and proud to follow in the footsteps and at the same time humbled. My Mam and Dad, Sister Catherine, and Brother Lord John are no longer here to support me in this role, but I know they would be guarded by the fact that our family and wider family are all here today to celebrate my inauguration. It's wonderful to see you all. I will end my scene. I will do the very best I can, and I hope at the end of my year I can say I did it good, but Linda's away. Thank you. Sorry about the tear. Thank you. Right, big deep breath and move on. I can confirm that one nomination has been received for the office of Sheriff and Deputy Lord Mayor for 2017-18. Can I call on councillor Ashby to move councillor David Down to be elected Sheriff and Deputy Lord Mayor for the ensuing municipal year?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and before I do say, may I be the first person to congratulate you on your election as Lord Mayor? Lord Mayor, councillor David Down was born in Portsmouth and started his service in local government in 1965, when he joined the Engineers' and Surveyors' Department as a junior clerk at £365 a year, that's a pound a day less tax. Before he left Portsmouth 10 years later, he'd held administrative positions in the city's town clerks and environmental health departments. A sabbatical year working with Initiatives for Change, an international charity dedicated to peacebuilding and reconciliation, actually lasted 20 years. During that time, he met and married Barbara, who'd been a student at High Heathen School before moving to London to study nursing. In 1994, while they were raising their two boys, Chris and Andy, and working at the charity's conference centre in Cheshire, they were invited to move to Newcastle to join Barbara's parents Rex and Betty Gray, and family friends and community leaders Harry and Ranju Shukla. The Shuklas and Barbara's parents worked closely together in community development and interfaith and race relations. David first met them at the Cheshire Conference Centre in the 1970s, and again when attending a community conference in Newcastle back in the 1980s. He immediately fell in love with the city, especially when he was able to see United beat Chelsea during the weekend of that conference, and let's hope he'll be able to do the same again next season. In 1999, David was proud to be elected City Councillor for Castle Ward, and then in 2004, he was elected to represent Walsington Ward, whose residency served in his usual wholehearted way for three years. Thereafter, David was elected to represent Parklands Ward, and the rest, they say, is history. And that's when I first met him, when he knocked on my door with a bundle of Focus leaflets. He may usually be a quiet man in the chamber, but he's an assiduous worker raising his voice for his constituents. It's often said that Parklands is a ward that's easier to represent. It may appear easy to some, but it's because for over 42 years, its councillors, past and present, have worked hard every day for local people. They have many of the same problems as other wards and deserve the same determined representation. David is the vanguard of such action, as the number of emails from him in my inbox will testify. He can't even relax on the bus to and from the Civic. He's looking out the window, photographing overflowing waste bins and reporting them to EnviroCall. He's usually our attender at church coffee mornings, but his figure doesn't reflect all the home baking he consumes at them, and I'm sure he'll come out of a year of civic service still fritting the robes, it'll hopefully dawn in a few moments. David says that moving to Newcastle was the best thing he could have done. His heart is here, he loves Newcastle and its people, and will be honoured to be Sheriff and Deputy Lord Mayor and being given the privilege of undertaking the community and civic duties of the office. He tells me it will provide him with the best opportunity to meet more Geordies, enjoy their company, celebrate their achievements, hear their aspirations for today and the future, and when the opportunity arises, welcome visitors to our great city of Newcastle and promote all that it has to offer. Lord Mayor, I'm more than delighted to propose councillor David Down to be Sheriff and Deputy Lord Mayor for the coming municipal year.
Thank you, councillor Ashby. Can I call on councillor Allen to second, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations on your appointment as Lord Mayor. I'm delighted to second this nomination to appoint councillor David Down to be Sheriff and Deputy Mayor of this great city. I know that David and Barbara will be excellent ambassadors for Newcastle, as they love the city and are both very warm and caring people, as well as being dedicated and hardworking. David and I have known each other for some years, but it wasn't until 2012, when I joined him in Parklands Ward, that we began to work together. Since then, we have worked closely together, and with the addition of Robyn, we now work as a team for the residents of Parklands Ward. Now, those of you who think that the residents of Parklands Ward never have problems are very much mistaken. Over the past five years, we've helped with many issues. Admittedly, a lot of them have been transport-related recently, but we do deal with a wide range of issues, and David is always ready to go the extra mile to help someone who is in difficulties. And as Robyn has said, or even to get a rubbish bin emptied, and we really do have the photographs to prove it. If there's a coffee morning or a fete to be attended, David will be there, introducing himself to people and taking up issues that are raised with him. If it wasn't for the many games of tennis that he and Barbara play, I'm sure that David would be cake shaped with the amount of coffee and cakes he consumes. And by the way, David, I reckon this makes it your turn for what my husband calls the Parklands curry nights. I look forward to helping David and Barbara whenever I can over the coming year and I know that David will make an excellent Sheriff and Deputy Lord Mayor. I am honoured to second this nomination, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Allen? I declare councillor David Down to be elected Sheriff and Deputy Lord Mayor of this city for the ensuing municipal year. Thank you. The new Sheriff and Deputy Lord Mayor will now make the declaration of acceptance of office.
I, David Down, having been elected Sheriff and Deputy Lord Mayor for the city of Newcastle upon time, hereby declare that I take the said office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties thereof, according to the best of my judgement and ability. I undertake to be guided by the Newcastle City Council code of conduct in the performance of my functions in that office.
Lord Mayor and hope he enjoys his year as much as I enjoyed it? Thank you.
Can I wish to begin by wishing you congratulations on your inauguration, Linda? As Lord Mayor for the ensuing municipal year, I wish you every success and happiness, as well as health and stamina, as you undertake the many duties of your high office. I would also like to thank my councillor colleagues for giving me the opportunity to be Sheriff and Deputy Lord Mayor for the coming municipal year. It is a great honour and I will carry out the duties and responsibilities of the office with great joy and to the best of my ability. To be able to do my best, I know I need the assistance of my wife Barbara, whom I can't see because of this hi thing here, but I know she's there. So would ask that she be accepted as my consort. When she is not free to assist me, I wish to call upon the assistance of my Ward colleague, councillor Pauline Allen, also following friends and family, with your indulgence, Miss Rona Cross MBE, Mrs Mary Ashby, Mr John Hewitt, and my son Christopher Down and his wife, Zhao Lin. Once again, many, many thanks to you all for this privilege.
I'd now like to call on councillor Nick Forbes to propose a vote of thanks to the retiring Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I add my congratulations to those already passed on on your election to office? I know you'll have a fantastic year ahead and also Sheriff and Deputy Lord Mayor to you too. And now to Hazel. This is our opportunity to say thank you to Hazel for her year in office and every Lord Mayor brings a bit of their personality to the role. So this year, the Lord Merality has been infused with dignity, with commitment, with experience and with grace, but it's also been infused with passion, with pride, with warmth and not a few tears. In fact, it's been a running joke between Hazel and me that her year could have been sponsored by Kleenex. In the role as Lord Mayor, in this chamber, you chair council meetings and Hazel's had some difficult meetings to share. She's kept us all, well, most of us, in check throughout the year, but she's also represented the city at a range of major events, from Remembrance Sunday, Armed Forces Day, the royal visits such as Princess Anne's visits to the Central Library. And those, of course, are the things that happen in every Lord Mayor's year of office. But Hazel has also been the Lord Mayor at a time of great celebration for our city and also some challenging times. Celebration, of course, because she, along with Ian Graham, were Lord Mayors in the year of the 800th year of celebrating the Lord Merality itself. And so we've had a range of special events and occasions to mark such an unbroken chain of history with our past and Hazel has absolutely risen to the challenge of representing us as a city at all of those events. But the theme of her year was working together and some of the events that we've seen and had to respond to as a city have really tested that message. Most recently, the attacks in Manchester, but also the Orlando bombings back in last June and also last year, the murder of Joe Cox. Challenging times where working together, Hazel's theme for the year, was never more appropriate. There have also been some very special occasions, such as the naming of a train, the Lord Mayor of Newcastle, where we stood on a very chilly morning at the central station and Hazel unveiled the plaque. And the Lord Mayor of Newcastle, the train, not the Lord Mayor, funnels up and down the east coast, carrying thousands of people a year. But also the unveiling of the Alan Shearer statue outside St James's Park, supported by Bruce and Freddie Shepherd, who I know were delighted to be able to be given freedom of the city, another one of your special presentations during the 800th year. The installation of our new bishop, Bishop Christine, who has already become such an important part of the fabric of our communities and who joined you, Hazel, yesterday at the vigil at the monument alongside other faith leaders. But also a couple of special occasions which I know were deeply significant for Hazel herself. The visit that you and I did to Hadrian School. I know it's very special because your dad was a governor there, you've been involved with the school for years, it's where Judith, your sister, went and I've still got some wonderful pictures of you sat in that magnificent armchair, telling stories to the children. And of course, the family picnic in Exhibition Park, where you rode in the Lord Mayor's coach, just as your dad had done some 20 years ago before you. Your mum and quite possibly your dad have looked on with all of us in pride at the extraordinary job that you've done throughout this year. I want to pay a particular thank you, not just to Hazel, but also to Trevor. Trevor, if you're here, you now get your wife back. Goodness knows what she's going to do when she's kicking her heels around the house rather than getting under your feet. I hope you've got an allotment to escape to or something similar. A very big allotment. But Trevor, the role of a consort isn't always easy, but you've also served with great dignity throughout the year and we also owe you a huge debt of gratitude. So Hazel, at the end of what has been an extraordinary year in office, I can't think of anybody who was more apt to take on the role of Lord Mayor in this very special year. I hope that you now have time to have a decent break, have a holiday, see the family, see Charlie and Henry a bit more and on behalf of the whole of the City Council, can I offer you our sincere and heartfelt thanks for your year of service so wonderfully delivered on behalf of our city? Thank you.
Can I call on councillor Anita Loa to second the vote of thanks?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and my congratulations both to you and the new Sheriff, but this is about Hazel. I don't know what quite to say about Hazel. I think she comes as a package with Trevor. I think that they are a team and it's been very apparent over the last year just how much that team have enjoyed life as the Sheriff and Consort. She comes from a family who've had a superb time as politicians in this city and I think Hazel's year has summed up that. I think we all remember the fondness Terry and Isabel, who is here today and it's really good that that tradition's carried on, but you've carried on in such a positive and wonderful way. I have to say you've been a superb Lord Mayor. I think it's been amazing Hazel's strong constitution through all of this. I've never known anyone work as hard or be so enthusiastic about the smallest things, but she has been a great asset to the city over the last 12 months and I'm sure she's taken away many fond memories that she can talk about and think about over the coming two years. But Hazel has a secret. She likes people, she cares about people and people like her. It's not political, it's nothing, it's the person and that has come over greatly during this past 12 months. Lord Mayor, I hope council will join me in wishing and thanking Hazel and all the family who've helped her. She needs a rest, I don't think she'll have one, but I think it's been a really fruitful year on behalf of the city and a fitting Lord Mayor for the 800th year of the Merality. Well done Hazel, thank you.
Thank you councillor Loa. We now go to make presentations to the retiring Lord Mayor and Consort. Thank you. Sorry about this, I've got no shoulder, so the chain needs, we'll have to look at that for next time. Right. Where are we? Okay. I now call on the retiring Lord Mayor to reply to the vote of thanks.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and may I take this opportunity to congratulate you, Lord Mayor, and wish you, both you and your consort and your Lady Mayoress, as well as the Sheriff, Deputy Lord Mayor and his Lady Mayoress, all the very best for your year in office. I know you will have a wonderful year, as I have had this year, and I thank you, Lord Mayor, for your kind words earlier. May I also thank councillor Forbes and councillor Loa for their kindness in what they said and council for the vote of thanks that you and support that you have given me throughout this very special year, for not only me, but for me and my family. Today, it is fitting that I relinquish office on this very special, personal day for me because today is Wesley Day and being a Methodist, any Methodist among us will know how important that is. As I have said, I have had a wonderful term in office, but I could not do it without the support of my husband, Trevor, my family and all my friends who have undoubtedly gone beyond, beyond, over and above to support both me and my charities this year. The leader of councillors pinched some of the things that I was going to say, but they're written down and if I go off script, you all know where it will end up. So during the year, I have really been delighted to have met people from all walks of life, members of the Royal Family, including, yes, the Princess Royal, and also a private moment with Prince Harry. Well, we have got the same hair colour, you know, come on. Well, we have got the same hair colour, you know, come on. In the nicest possible way and protocol, I have to add. And also to meet many people less fortunate than any of us here, who rely on either charity or other people to care for them. As well as volunteers and residents across the length and breadth of this city and beyond. I have been honoured and privileged to share time with them and support them in any way I can. And also, as has been referred to, the children. I have spent a lot of my year with children from a lot of schools across the city and other organisations. And I have to say, they have been a credit to everyone with every school and every organisation they were from. And a delight to see so much positive things happening in both our schools and around the city. It has also been an honour to represent the city as Lord Mayor in the 800th anniversary of the creation of the Merality. And to work very closely with the Burgess's, as was then now the Freeman of the city. And I very much hope, I have made some very good friends there, and I very much hope that we continue this work with the Freeman into the future. And I'm sure we will. Events have included, as has been mentioned, the wonderful picnic in the park in August, where the fantastic refurbished Lord Mayor's carriage was used for the first time in many years, something that I will never forget. And working with children, as I say, within the museums, the Tynanmere Museums, we did a programme to educate children in schools and young people on the historical features of our great city. And they very much enjoyed that. Combining in the exhibition in the library, Unbroken Chain, featuring silver from our wonderful silver gallery and artefacts and ornaments from the mansion house. Something that Princess Royal was very much interested in. And she was very, very noted that she took away thoughts of how many local people cherished the history of our great city. The train has already been mentioned. And the fact that it's chugging up and down the east coastline is wonderful. At one point, our thoughts had visions of Thomas the Tank when they said there's going to be a train named. I thought, never in the wide world. But no, and it looks wonderful, I believe. Although I've never seen it yet myself, going up and down. Council members will recall that we have also witnessed eight people and organisations very linked to the city to have the honorary freedom, something which is the highest honour the city can bestow on anyone. And there have also, throughout the period of the 800 years, which spanned councillor Graham and myself, nine worthy recipients of the Lord Mayor Award for voluntary work in our community's 800. Something that is wonderful to give accolades to people doing so much for everyone in our city to benefit. One of the final events of the year brought the nine former Lord Mayors of the city who were able to attend with their Meresses and Consorts for the installation of the plaque at the civic centre downstairs, marking the current seat of local government in the city. And this complements the plaque installed earlier at the Guildhall at the beginning of the 800th anniversary, marking the original seat of governance. I would like to conclude by saying it has been a privilege and an honour to be Lord Mayor in this year, during this anniversary year, following in my late father's footsteps, something I'm very proud of, alongside my mother who's here, Alderman Cooney, and my aunt and uncle, sisters and daughter and son, and friends who have performed really well supporting me this year. Some are here, some have been unable to come. But I really do say it is a team. I always work as part of a team. And working together signifies exactly that. Thanks go to my chaplains from numerous denominations who have indeed come to events throughout the year. And as I said, my Lady Meresses. And also, thank you to our officers from all divisions of the council for their help and support throughout the year. My colleagues in council, too numerous to mention, other officers, too numerous to mention. But you all know who you are. I have always known that our staff are the greatest. And they work closely with many across the city in a dedicated way. And they have gone over and beyond to support this year and in previous years. And I would like to thank Brenda, Patrick, Linda, John, and anyone else who's worked closely in the Merrill Office this year for their support. I would also finally just like to say thank you to Newcastle United and the team, and rather, and anyone else involved, because they kicked the ball sufficient that we are going up to the start of next year. Because quite frankly, they should never have gone down, but they're going up and that is a wonderful start moving forward in September. Thank you all for allowing me the honour of holding this seat of office. And as I say, Lord Mayor, I'm sure you will do, and I know you'll do, a wonderful job.
We will now proceed with the rest of the council agenda as set out. Those guests who wish to attend the church service are asked to form up outside the council chamber and wait to be escorted to St Thomas by my Lady Meress and the Sheriff's Lady. Of course, you're welcome to stay if you want to. But it's quite a boring bit, this. You're still welcome to stay. You're home, you're living home. Tea will be available afterwards at the Banqueting Hall after the church service. And I hope to see you all then. Thank you. Better than I did, I couldn't hold it in. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, if we're good to go, because I believe we're running over too many tears this afternoon. Apologies for absence. Are there any apologies?
Lord Mayor, we've had apologies from councillors Allison, Cot, Davis, Denham, Kane, McGinnis, O'Brien, Shepherd, John Paul Stevenson, Stone, Strathairn and Taylor.
Is that it, everyone? Okay. Official announcements. On behalf of the council, I would like to offer condolences to the family and friends of Alderman Marion McWilliams, who passed away recently at the age of 86. Marion was first elected as a Conservative councillor to serve residence of Dean Ward back in 1979. And she served continuously in that role until 1995. During that time, Marion also worked as a deputy leader of the Conservative group for seven years. And in 1992, briefly stood in as leader. The first woman to lead a political group in the City Council. Marion served on numerous committees in her time as the City councillor, especially on social services, and was awarded the MBA for political and public service in 1993. She was enrolled as an honorary Alderman by Newcastle City Council in 1999. Marion was a regular figure at council, attending very often. And although quite outspoken in her views, she was well-liked and respected by councillors across the political divide and by officers. And also a great friend to many of us here today. I have to say, on a personal note, her and my mum were particularly good friends and got on very well even though there was a difference in politics. She will be sadly missed. And as a mark of respect, I will now ask council to stand for a minute's silence. Thank you, everyone. Appointment of Leader of the Opposition and Deputy Leader of the Opposition. Can I call on councillor Renton to move the following appointments? Councillor Lower as Leader of the Opposition and councillor Taylor as Deputy.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I congratulate you on becoming Lord Mayor of this great city and move that councillor Lower be Leader of the Opposition and councillor Taylor as Deputy Leader? Second the appointment, Lord Mayor, and best wishes for the year.
Thank you. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Okay, we move to appointment of committees, subcommittees, working groups, delegated subcommittees, boards and panels for 2017/18. I call on councillor Jackie Robinson to move.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, congratulations. The committees, the subcommittees, working groups, delegated subcommittees, boards and panels, including chairs and vice-chairs, set out in Appendix A circulated as amended, be appointed.
Can I call on councillor Powers to second? Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Appointment of representatives on the North East Combined Authority, Joint Authorities, Joint Committees and Other Bodies for 2017/18. Can I call on councillor Jackie Robinson to move?
Thanks. That the members set out in Appendix B and C circulated, be appointed, to serve as the council's representatives on the bodies indicated.
Councillor Powers to second?
Second, Lord Mayor.
Are the appointments agreed?
Agreed.
Charter update, Regulatory Appeals Committee. I call on councillor Jackie Robinson to move the report. Councillor Powers to second?
Move the report.
Is that agreed? Agreed, thank you. That concludes the business. Everyone is invited to join me for the service at St Thomas Church and then for tea in the Banqueting Suite.